This is in the morning before school starts from eight to eight thirty. These are all students who are part of the band program at BMS, but they do this as another ensemble as well. So we have a few of those ensembles, but this is our wind ensemble. We're playing here tonight. We're playing at White Rock on the eighteenth, and then we're going to do like hopefully a both middle, sorry, elementary school tour on the twentieth right before the holiday break. So we're going to play two songs right before the meeting kicks off, deck the halls, and then we'll finish with "Audling Sign."
Great job, guys. Honestly, a former middle school band member myself, ten years piano lessons, dreaded every minute of it, but lots of experience. Angela must played in college music, so.
Yeah, you guys were great.
You guys are great. Look way better than I used to play.
Yeah, me too. Band, all through middle school.
Oh, what instrument?
Clarinet.
Clarinet. I was the valve trombone.
Clarinet.
Clarinet. Maybe we should get a little band going.
I found my clarinet, but it needs all new cork.
Cork. It's like all dried out. I'm also sure I could remember.
Oh, I did. When I was trying to help the kids learn, it all came back to me. I didn't think I'd remember it all. I found it in my parents' basement, and I was like, I'll try it. It was squeaking from the felt pad, but.
Like, I couldn't tell you what the things were, but I remember them.
Yeah, I remember the notes. I was like, oh, I remember how it is.
You guys ready? You want to get something, Martin? Martin, you want to get after that, or? You sure?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right.
We could have dinner and live music with every school meeting.
Yeah.
Take it on the road. Taco Bell next time, maybe. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. All right. All right. We'll call the meeting to order at six oh three. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marcy, any announcements?
One quick one. There's, in front of you, Bryce, there's, we have a last-minute request for an overnight trip for the wrestling team at the end of December, going to Middlebury. We can take action on that during the action agenda.
Okay. Sounds good. Angela, did I hear you make a motion to approve the November fourteenth meeting minutes?
You did hear me make that motion, yes.
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion on the November fourteenth meeting minutes? Do you want to tell me who? Yeah, she's on here.
She's on.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. I didn't see any issues. Any more?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on, special presentations.
I am going to let Dwayne share information on this as it came to him.
It did. Oh, sorry. I got to use the mic. It did. So once, you know, usually every year, or maybe a couple times a year, we'll have a senior project that will require some kind of additional approval because it's, usually it's a permanent structure, something like that. So Joseph Albushees came to me maybe a month and a half ago with the idea for one of his senior project. I let him explain what it is, but it is something that would require the board to approve because, again, it's a, it's a structure that when we have structures or permanent installation of some kind, you have to accept it because then it gets covered under our insurance if you agree with the proposal, so.
And is it appropriate for us to, to make that motion if we're so inclined after the presentation and before we do anything else this evening?
You can, yep. You can, you can decide, you know, I mean, really, I think what, what I think we're looking for tonight is that this is not something that you would say, oh, no, we're not in favor of that at all, kind of go in a different direction because, you know, if you're going to do a senior project, it's your senior year, you have to, you know, we're in December. So, so I think that's the, that's what we're looking for tonight, I think, so.
I'm going to ask you to use a mic.
Yes.
We have a mic right here.
So hi, everyone. My name is Joseph Albushees, and as you guys know, my senior project, if you don't already know, is to put an electric vehicle charger in at Bow High School. I do have a copy of the written proposal right here typed out, so I'm going to quickly dish that out. Basically, what it was is that I've always been kind of a car person my whole life. I've always been drawn to them ever since I was a child. It was some of my first words. And then as I've gotten older and the automotive industry has changed, I've definitely gotten more into electric cars and more clean energy policies and things in that kind of realm. Going into my senior year, I know I wanted to do something with cars because the year with Senior SEM and the project, it was like I could finally grasp this kind of thing that I've always wanted to del more delve deeper into, which is kind of the whole point of what Senior SEM was, and I was really excited to. But I also wanted to have a really good cause and benefit for the community in addition to that. And with my passion of electric vehicles, I decided we should just put an EV charger in the school. I think it's a really good way to show Bow's progression and how we can move forward as a school into a new, cleaner future. I know we have solar panels planned to go in in the next few years, and the coal plant is being shut down soon, so I figured this was just another step in the right direction towards a greener future. Basically, I have gone through with an electrician so far. I've surveyed parts of the school. Currently, the proposed spot is spot number ninety-nine by the track and field. That was the closest spot wiring-wise that we could put a charger in. I had originally considered the SAU lot out front, but that would have caused a lot more wiring and a lot more money in excavating and issues that would extend beyond my senior year. Through in the proposal, there includes kind of the background that I just talked about. It includes the project progress so far, and then it also includes two options that I am proposing. Option one, I have gone through with an electrician and a final estimate. I do have a copy of the estimate on paper if you guys would like to see that. Would you like me to dish that out? I have five copies of the estimate, Mr. Ford, if you want to look at the official.
You can give it to the board, too.
This was the official one. He just gave it to me this week. Mark Perry is a local electrician in Bow. He installed our Level Two charger at our house when we got an EV just a few months ago, and actually, I am the one that has the grateful pleasure of driving it, and it has really been no issues so far over the past few months. Even in this harsh weather today, I had no issues. I plugged it in, there was, basically, I got to school fine. And for me, part of owning one really helped me push this project and be like, this can't happen as an owner of one for over the past few months. Basically, that estimate is for the option one in the written proposal states, which states that to put a, excuse me, that one pretty much is going to have the plan of putting a Level Two Tesla Universal wall connector in. The plan with that is it's going to be a, in a locked box. The charger does not have any method of payment, and the code will only be given to Bow and Dunbar and Community members at the beginning. I believe the initial cost of the installation and charger is $2,047. That is what I have down there. That is, that's the cost of the installation and the charger. That one, as I stated before, does not have a payment method, and the school would have to fund that. However, I am working if the project decides to go forward on GoFundMe and crowdfunding throughout that as well, and I'm also reaching out to local auto dealerships to see if they could sponsor the charger. The other option I have, which is option two, is to install a more commercial charge point pedestal in that same location where customers could have the option to pay, and it could provide revenue to the school, and it's definitely a more secure way of controlling the charger. However, the obvious reason why that one is a little more hesitant is upfront, the cost is about five, six thousand dollars, while the Level Two Tesla wall one is only about $2,000. That one definitely, and I talked with the electrician, he preferred installing the Tesla wall one just for this first initial phase of the EV charger if we were to proceed forward. It's easier, it's, it's much more quicker to install. There's definitely going to be more fees associated with the other option two with ChargePoint, that is just one company. There are a few more. However, definitely, payment issue is a thing that I wanted to see what you guys thought about and how we could do it, and I definitely, if you decide to proceed with the project, can work to use a GoFundMe crowdfunding or vehicle auto dealer sponsorships throughout the next few months. What do you guys think so far?
I can say I am so excited about this. I'm so excited about this idea. I think it's fabulous. I'm a little concerned about us doing just Tesla in case somebody has something, a different, like a Honda.
The port can charge Tesla and non-Tesla EVs. I forgot to mention that.
Oh, it can?
We have the same one.
And they have adapters.
And there are adapters, too. Pretty much, I actually have the same one at my house. You click a button, and that deploys the J1772 port, which is the port that all the other EVs that are not Tesla use, but you also can deploy the NACS port, which is the Tesla port. And both of those options that I have in the proposal also charge Tesla and non-Tesla EVs.
So the difference in the, in the price, then, is for, to have a battery of something, then it goes back to?
The price more is just kind of different because the ChargePoint one has a more secure payment and credit card, and it's definitely through a more commercial company. It's just the process of it is more complicated to install, and then setting up a payment method to set with the school on Alma and everything would probably be much more complicated than the Tesla wall one. And the electrician I know is, he installs pretty much Tesla wall ones all the time, so that is kind of his wheelhouse. And from his perspective, he thought the other option two was much more of a headache, but looking at a business perspective from the school, I could see why you might want a more secure pedestal that might have a way to pay, so that way, it's not just Bow and Dunbar and Community members. If like a parent from another town comes for a game with an EV, they might have the ability to charge if they had the ChargePoint reader as well. There is no payment method available for the Tesla one, if you are wondering that.
I do have one other question, too, though. Do you have any information on roughly how much it costs to, like, say, if a car was completely dead and to, like, charge it?
I don't have exact, like, numbers to the sense, but I've charged mine commercially a few times, and it's about like ten to twenty dollars. And so far, the electricity amount that we've used at our home for our electric car that we don't even plug in every day is about just as much as your dehumidifier. It really is not using a whole lot. It's not like, it hasn't exponentially increased our electricity bill, and because, like, electric vehicles aren't crazy popular in Bow, I know it wouldn't be, like, used every single day. But I do know, me and another student, and I actually interviewed her, do drive an EV, and she was in favor of it. So I think just, and another thing, just having the charger there is a really good way to kind of show people, like, it can happen, and we can move forward with electric vehicles, because that's the decision the automotive industry has chosen to take.
Yeah, Mel, yeah, I would just want to say that I pay more for my electric clothes dryer than I pay for my charging per month for my car, and I plug it in every day. It's pennies.
Oh, okay, great.
It's super cheap.
Sorry. I think it's a great idea. I think it's really, your whole plan is great, and I, it sounds like the cost wouldn't be a lot. Do you have any idea about, like, maintenance costs, what that?
Maintenance costs would probably be, I would say, just as like a rough estimate, like, maybe a hundred dollars a month, maybe less than that. I know that it won't be used, it maybe won't be used every day because the, I would not plug it in with there every day with my electric car because I partner there, but I would not just openly use that. I don't need to charge the car every two hours, but I think because it wouldn't be used so much in the beginning, I think it would be not very much because not have much a lot of cost because it's kind of just installing it. It's that initial $2,000 of the charger and the installation. Installation is thirteen hundred. The Tesla wall one is $550 itself.
Roughly, how many, just roughly, on, you know, based on your experience, how many kids are driving electric cars these days? Is it like ten, twenty?
In Bow High School or just in general?
Yeah, Bow High School, like, a typical day.
Bow High School, so far, it is only me and one other student. However, now that I've owned one as a student, I think it is a solution that every parent should look into. We currently lease ours, and the lease payment is a, in this, at least in this world, at least, very low, $200 a month. It is not, and no gas bills either, no, no oil. So pretty much, it is a very, like, I think as a parenting perspective, it's a great way, and with the lease, the way we've done it at least is like, we're only going to have the car for two years in this period that we need an extra car in our family because the Albushees family, as many of you know, are very involved in running around, so I think the advantage of just having a fourth car, that you don't have to pay for gas and a very low monthly payment. Like, I think a kid working could easily make $200 a month and have that payment. I think, at least from my, like, from a personal financial perspective, I think it's very achievable, at least in this situation.
Two suggestions for you, and feel free to reach out to us for more information.
Yes.
Your parents have my information, if nothing else. BAC used to have Merrimack Street Volvo, used to be one of our sponsors, and a guy named Andrew, I can't think of his last name, but he's the CEO of Merrimack Street Volvo. Reach out to him because he was a guy that was very willing to help us out. And the other one is, New Hampshire Auto Dealers Association is also in Bow. It's over by the library, and that's a lobbyist for all of the auto dealer associations.
NHADA, would that be the?
NHADA.
Okay.
And they, they very likely could, would be willing to help out as well, so. And I have contact information for all those guys if you're interested.
Thank you. If you could actually, yep.
I think they would. I think actually they'd be pretty interested.
Thank you very much. As you see in there, I did reach out to Grepone. They have not responded yet, but I will be reaching out to Bank Chevrolet in Capital City Kia where I got my, where we got our Kia electric from. So I think that they would be willing, do I think, put some money down for them. It's readvertising. If I can get them to put like a sticker for their dealer, like, $2,000 is how much they pay in newspaper ads per month. So I think for them, at least, that might be a no-brainer. Grepone, I know, did not respond, but.
With BAC, we never got any responses from Grepone. I, I don't know why. I don't know if anyone in town ever has much success with them, but they, for whatever reason, and same thing, it would be silence. It wouldn't even be a response.
Okay. But I also think, you know, advertising that GoFundMe and stuff, because I will donate to that.
Yeah, I know, I don't know if you guys know Hannah Palaski. I know she just did her senior project of the board at the track. She said she raised so much money very quickly using that platform, and I think that, that's a very good way to kind of have individual support, but I think definitely if any other businesses were to contribute, like, even $500, I'd put, like, over the box to cover it, like, thank you for your money, thank you for your sponsorship of the charger. Currently, I'm still looking into the box. I've seen some solutions on Amazon where it's a very heavy-duty thing with a, probably like a three-digit PIN that we can only provide to certain members. I know that method is definitely a little more open, but I don't think the demand for EVs is, at least in this area, is very much like, I have to run to Bow High School to charge my car. Like, I don't think it's a very, I don't think it would be much of a problem at first. I know kind of having a PIN out in the world might definitely have some issues, but I think for this initial stage, it might be okay, and obviously, saving a few thousand dollars compared to option two would be much more easier and obtainable.
I just had a question about the logistics of that. So does spot ninety-nine stay open and not get assigned to?
I'm thinking if it were installed in this school year, I would probably contact the student that's in it, and we could relocate them to a different spot.
Upgrade, upgrade to yours.
It's one twelve. I was like one of the last, I was one of the last, like, five seniors picked in the new raffle system this year, so.
But maybe Mr. Fisk would like to donate his spot again or something.
I think he already did.
Dwayne, anything to add to this?
Oh, I mean, there's a couple, I mean, no, right now, right now. I mean, there's a couple of things that I'll have to, you know, just check on. I mean, you know, we have a policy on, you know, the district technically, we can't, as a district, set up a crowdfund GoFundMe, but we can have students do that, but there's a little, there's some issues about where that money goes. If it comes into here, it becomes public money, and then, so we'll have to talk about, you know, that kind of, you know, kind of logistic thing.
That was just also, yeah, that was just one method, too, if we were to proceed forward.
Nope, that's fine. You know, and, and other senior projects have used that. That's not, that doesn't preclude people from using it individually and things, but there's some rules around it with, if we did it, we're not going to do that, but, and we can talk about that. I mean, the finance thing, we haven't, you know, we haven't really talked about, and then, you know, pending, you know, this thing, you know, pending success, then we'll have to talk about the logistics of access and using it and things like that, but that's not a, that's not a barrier that, you know.
Would it be, in your opinion, inappropriate for us to, to basically make a motion right now to say, yeah, I mean, I'd like to give him a little more?
Nope, that's not. I mean, if you, if you feel that this is inappropriate, if this is an appropriate thing, you know, then you're just allowing it to just keep moving forward, and that's the next step. So no, that's not inappropriate.
Dwayne, I do have one more question that I can answer. If down the road, more spots, like, there was a greater need, I don't know, five years from now or something, could where the proposed installation is, could more chargers be added there?
Well, I don't know the capacity of that building because we're going to be, we're going to be tying into that building, but, no, I mean, that, that's the spot that, you know, in my mind, you know.
Makes sense.
Yes. Make the most sense. I mean, there's, you know, obviously, you know, when I started, you know, shopping at the grocery store I go to, there were none of these. There's now seven of these in the back of the lot. I mean, this is something that's just changing, and so I don't know where that'll look like in a few years, but that's where I would have put it, for sure.
I did do a site survey as part of the progress with the facilities director, Mr. Cludier, and the electrician together. Fifty amps was the max, just number-wise, from the panel at the track. It's the panel boxes in between the building where they sell concessions and the storage building for track, and it would be on the storage building for track facing the lot on the other page. I don't know if you guys saw, there is a labeled diagram, so.
I would also say, if we ever reach that point, I mean, hopefully, by then, our solar panels are up, and we could likely tie solar panels into that.
That was another thing I thought, like, in a few years, if, once the solar system is rewired and self-sufficient for the school, that charger would probably cost very little at that point to maintain because the school is sourcing their energy from the sun. I knew adding panels onto that building would probably add too much complications right now because of the whole thing that's happening on the landfill, but that was one way I thought about it, but that would also add a few thousand dollars to the cost of installing a bunch of panels on top of a storage building.
Yeah, and what we haven't done for that building, and what we would have to do is like we did for the, for the schools, is we'd have to do a load analysis of that building, whether or not it could even handle it. Because that was built, you know, those buildings were built in ninety-seven. Obviously, this wasn't even thought of then, so it might be fine, but it might be, there might be additional work if you wanted to do something like that. So we'd have to look at that.
And then the wall-mounted one, I had looked into ones that kind of stand on their own, but that one was a much more complicated process with wiring and stuff. Just putting it on the wall was going to be easier. And part of the diagram I also have, once, if this goes, go through, I'll reach out to someone to readjust the fencing in the front. That's very down the road, but just because there is a fence in the way right now, it's spot, fence, wall, so part of it down the road will be finding a way to mix that up and so the charger can actually be accessed.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
What's the motion, though? I mean, it's a quirky one right now.
Well, I would say the motion to approve.
Does it need, does it, will it go to the town meeting in March?
No, no.
Okay. Well, that was one of my questions I was wondering about because it, okay, good.
I think, I think you could say to move forward with it, but to keep us abreast if something should change from what it is.
And exploration, right? And to, and to keep Mr. Ford in the loop, just things come up.
Yep. I'll let you guys know if a dealer agrees to give money, or if I start the GoFundMe and you guys have the list of rules that I need and all that stuff, so.
And prior to installation, like, all of those steps that you kind of outlined?
Yes.
So a motion to approve Joseph's senior project, subject to working with Dwayne Ford, and any potential school restrictions?
Absolutely.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Martin. Any other discussion? I guess the only discussion I'd say is, I think Janet made really the best point, which is like, there's no question, that's the future, so if there's a way for us to prepare for two or three spots down the road, but I don't want to jam up a senior project either, like, this is the focal point, but let's really keep an eye towards building this out because it's, it's coming, so.
Yeah, I did put, that's why I thought about the ChargePoint one, because that one is a little more scalable. Obviously, that one would be, as you saw, six, seven thousand dollars, and I knew upfront that would be a lot. So I think the Tesla one in the box is going to be our best, like, let's try this out. And then obviously, five, 10 years down the road, if all of a sudden, every parent and their child drives one, then we're going to proceed forward with it. But thank you guys so much. I'm so happy to proceed with it, and that you guys are on board, and I'm really happy to proceed with it, and I'm really looking forward to the future for the school and the charger. Thank you.
Joseph, I have one more good, good source of money for you here.
Yes.
And we got a bunch of members of this, of this group here, Bow Schools Foundation, which is the treasurer right there, and the secretary's over there. So I have a feeling if presented something to the Bow Schools Foundation, I'm pretty confident that they would be receptive.
So you said the?
Bow Schools Foundation.
And the NHADA was the other one?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion? We didn't vote on it?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Great. All right. Any public comment? Any public comment? All right. Sure. Or we can give you the microphone there if you prefer.
It's working?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Sue Mark I Jenkins. I live at Eleven Hope Lane. I came tonight to formally ask that you begin as soon as possible video recording all your, of your public meetings and posting the recordings online so the public can access them in a timely manner and at their convenience. I recently asked with short notice whatever, whether you could add this topic to your agenda tonight, and I appreciate that you committed to discussing it at your next meeting on January nine. I hope in the next month that you can assess the school district's capacity for video recording every public meeting, and on January nine, that you will present the projected costs associated with this request. I'd also appreciate hearing about the availability of funds for this, both in the current fiscal budget and the budget that you're preparing for the next fiscal year. In 2022, voters at the annual town meeting mandated by voter petitions that the select and planning boards do what I'm asking this board to do. I believe that practice in our town government has resulted in more trust and a more informed community. There are many situations in which video recording the school board's meetings can be helpful to all parties. For example, there are times when there are differing recollections of what was discussed or decided at a meeting, or times when people need to understand either the complete context in which a decision was made or an important detail that supported it. Video recordings are also helpful to the person preparing the minutes of your meetings. Knowing they're being recorded can remind participants to maintain the level of decorum that's warranted by the board's seriousness of purpose. Live streaming your meetings without recording them is of no use to community members who want to be informed but aren't available to tune in at 6:00 PM on Thursday nights. Video recording your meetings and making the recordings easily available to everyone promotes transparency, which builds trust. And very importantly, video recording your meetings will help increase residents' engagement, which gives breadth to our collective decision-making and enriches our community life.
Great, thank you. Like you said, we're, we've committed to put that on the agenda for our January meeting, for our January meeting, and we'll take it up at that time. Thank you. Any other public comments? No? All right. Moving on to the reports. Marcy, anything to add to your report?
Um, I would, on the agenda for this evening, coming out of non-public was our negotiated agreements. Those weren't quite ready, so we're not prepared to do that. So we won't be voting on that tonight. We'll bring that to our January meeting. We received the support staff redlined document today, and hopefully the BEA tomorrow, sometime soon. As soon as I get them, I'll pass them along to you.
Any questions for Marcy? I had one here, Marcy. Uh, my notes indicate you, you talk about funding here, but some changes, and I put this out of a big impact on our budget.
Yeah. And we'll definitely be talking about that during our budget discussions next week, but there's a significant reduction in state special aid reimbursement. And we are anticipating an even greater reduction next year. So Dwayne can talk about the specifics in terms of what he's budgeted. He's always been very conservative in what he budgets for revenue, which is helpful, but it's a really significant impact on, on school districts. Um, you know, part of that is impacted by the raise that the, the age in which students can stay until 22 without then adjusting the budget to accommodate that. So it's putting some school districts in really tough spots.
No, no need to, we can talk about it at budget time. I don't, no need to get into details right now, then. Um, great. Any other questions for Marcy? No? Dwayne?
I do, I don't have anything to add.
Any questions for Dwayne? Very short and sweet, your report, and nothing to add.
December report is always short. It's very busy.
No? Wow. We're cruising. Um, Jessica, anything to add to your report?
I don't have anything to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Nothing? Okay. Moving on. Owen?
Sorry, I do have a little bit. Uh, we did meet with the Bridging the Gap group for the, the grant, and they are going to offer us the full amount of $35,000. And the best that we understand it, it's $35,000 a year for two years. And it's going to be a, a good amount of work for the elementary school, but it's going to be all about, uh, like it says, bridging the gap for students that are having some struggles in reading. And it's going to certainly support all that, all that we talked about in the Science of Reading podcast that I talked to you about a couple of years ago. So I think it's going to be a great move for us. And again, a lot of work, but really valuable work. So looking forward to it.
Any questions for Owen? Wow, we're all very quiet. I, I have one. What will happen after those two years? So assuming the grant runs out, nothing, no one, there's no more money that comes along with the grant at that point, what is your expectation?
This is a really interesting grant because what, they, they give you the money. And a lot of times with grants, they'll give you the money and then you run off and do whatever you want to do with the money. Uh, this one comes with some strings attached, but really valuable strings. And then they come in and they, they teach you processes. And it's a lot of what Beth has done with MTSS, but it's hyper-focused on reading. And you have coaches from the state. They meet with us once a month for two hours at a time. And then they're meeting with individual teams within the school. So I mean, we, we walk away with a stronger knowledge base. So it's, that's, that's, that's kind of the difference in that we're not getting a position, we're not having to pay for a position afterwards, we're just gaining knowledge. And, and that's really valuable. So there's no added cost afterwards.
Okay.
If I, if I can add to that one, when I did the presentation, I think some schools who have gotten the grant have used it for positions. We're just fortunate in that we have those positions already. So I think that's part of it.
Excellent. Uh, gentlemen, Matthew, Trevor, anything to add to your report?
Uh, the France trip was very successful. It was a blast. It was a little difficult getting there. We ended up having like a four-hour delay because it snowed in Paris for the first time when we were supposed to land. So all the flights got pushed back, but that was okay. We played cards on the airport floor. It was fun. Uh, NHS hosted a really fun event with the LINKS program. We had like a little art day on the flex day. Uh, everyone loved it. It was a blast. We did pottery, painting. Yeah, it was just fun. Yeah, go ahead. Here, do you want to take that one?
Uh, I've been asked by Connor to advertise for the BoBot bout in January. Uh, so I went to one of the meets and it was pretty cool. And this one's going to be at Bo High School. So it'll be like a cool event to just see how the robot teams are going. And last year, uh, one team made like worlds, as you all know. So it's just a good, good event to see how, spectate the robots.
Yeah. And we, the school board went and watched a demonstration of it essentially about a year ago, I think, um, down in the first floor, down on the other end to see kind of what goes on. It was really cool.
I came last year and so they have, I'm not even sure what you call it, but the, the challenge up here.
The arena.
The arena. Uh, but they have a camera up top, so the, the view is from down here. And then you have a screen. It's really cool. You can actually, you can be out here and see what's going on. And people, and the calf is where they set up, and people are like sprinting back and forth with parts. And it was really very interesting to see.
Nice. Any questions for Trevor or Matthew? No? Trevor, I went to Mont Saint Michelle myself back when I was in college. And it's such a, it's such an interesting community. Yeah, it's this like castle city that when the tide comes in, it's an island. And when the tide goes out, you can get to it. But it's really cool. We missed a train to get there and we got stuck in town, me and a couple buddies. And we were having, eh, it turned out okay. We were, we were having a few libations and it was like, uh, the people were extremely hostile to the three of us in this bar. And at one point, a guy came over to us and, and he struck up a conversation. We're like, we, we said, oh, we're from the United States. And they were like, hey, they're, he announces the rest of the bar, like, hey, these guys are, they're good, they're okay. They're not English. They thought we were from England. And they hated us. And we were American. And they, and all of a sudden they're buying us drinks. It was really a strange experience.
From what I heard, like going into the trip, I expected them to be a little like, uh, maybe hostile towards Americans, but no, they were so nice. I had like multiple people offering me their seat when I was carrying the, uh, because we had a wheelchair because someone was injured on the trip, and offered me a seat on the metro. So they were very, very nice. And even Madame said the other day, everyone she interacted with was much nicer than like pastime. Maybe it was like the Olympic effect. There was kind of like the nicest place or something. It was great.
Nice. Great experience. All right. Um, moving right along then, I guess Lori?
Melissa's here.
Oh, okay. Anything to add to Lori's report?
Is this on? Yeah. Hi, I'm Melissa Young. I'm the assistant principal. And Lori Kruger is out on medical leave. So my first update is hers, about 2:00, we got an update that her surgery went well, and she was at that point in recovery. So now she's just going to start to heal. Um, and she did a fine job explaining the upgrades we had after Thanksgiving break when we got to move back into the lower half first floor of our building. What I want to say is, when I knew the addition was coming, I knew that it was going to be, you know, knock your socks off gorgeous. And I was thinking, man, how are we going to keep everyone happy in the rest of the building? And the renovation is gorgeous. The renovations tie both parts together, and they look like they were designed to be that way. And you walk through the renovation, and it's more amazing to me because I know how ugly it had gotten over the years. The addition just looks fabulous, but when I walked through the renovation, I'm blown away because I didn't, it was great. And then the, sorry, elementary school lens, um, we got our full playground back after Thanksgiving. We have our Gaga pitbacks. We're Gaga-ing big time. And they have their whole field to play soccer and football and tag and all that. So the kids are pretty psyched.
Nice. Any questions, anyone? Um, you may not know this, but you can, you can remind Lori if you want. Uh, we had talked about having them voting in March or April, whenever it is, at the elementary school.
Yes.
Has any progress been made on that?
No. So actually, I said to Dwayne at some point today, like, I, I, that's on me. So I'm definitely going to call and see. What Lori and I talked about, we would probably have to use the gymnasium for the voting portion, and then arrange a tour with some students, maybe, you know, students like Trevor and Matthew, who want to take people through and then exit somewhere on the addition side. So.
Yeah. If nothing else, you, you could have just one
Right.
direction, half, force them to walk.
Yeah, you have to go this way. Right. Yeah. So I'm on that.
Okay. Anything else? No? Uh, Adam?
Hi, everyone. I have a couple of updates and then just do kind of a shout out. Um, the, the toy food, clothes and toiletries drive that the school council, our student council had put together, really had a bang-up year. They raised over 3,000 items for the Friends of Forgotten children in the Concord area, which was pretty cool. They did a really great job. And unlike last year where we kind of scrambled and a bunch of us with like pickup trucks kind of volunteered to just drive stuff over because we were really outgrowing our local capacity, they, a few gentlemen from the organization showed up in a rented U-Haul, and they actually, they filled that box truck pretty well. Like, it was, it was a significant amount of stuff, which was very cool. So shout out to them and a good update. Um, then the other thing is our basketball season is up and running. Today was our first home games. It was really fun to see the kids back in the stands and World Academy. So tough, tough, always a tough way to open, but, um, it was fun to see the kids there. And the, the spirit team, the cheerleaders were there, and they seemed to be having a lot of fun as well. So it's, it's fun to have that, that aspect of school life kind of open for the winter. And now I want to do a shout out. Our music department has, it just crushes it in December. I mean, I, I put all the dates of the different things they have going on, but I know Dan had our chorus kids over at the Christmas tree lighting this past weekend. Matt was here tonight with, with his wind ensemble, which was awesome. And then I really want to plug, um, for this upcoming Wednesday, the winter concert is going to be over here at, at BHS at 6:30. I believe it's 6:30. And, um, it's always a lot of fun. So if you have time, I would encourage you to kind of stop in because they do a great job. And I know, um, Matt has a, a hope to get into the elementary schools, which they've tried to do in the past as well this time of year. And it's a, it's always really, it's neat to see them go over and interact with younger kids. So that's a, that's a good thing. And then just a final plug, um, I think we've returned basically to pre-COVID levels with the number of kids who are trying out for the New Hampshire Band Directors, kind of basically junior all-state, kind of, uh, it's called an honors band, but that, that's kind of the spirit of it. So that's pretty neat. So kind of a plug for our music department this month. And that's what I've got for you.
Nice. Any questions for Adam? Can I ask one, Adam? Who, who, who's the much better basketball coach for the boys now at the middle school than the prior coach from the last several years who was a train wreck?
I am going to respectfully stay out of that bear trap.
Now, who's the coach now?
Uh, Dagan Cludier.
Oh, okay.
This is great.
Nice.
All right.
Um, I just like, I would like to second that about the music department as having three kids doing, doing it with those two teachers. They're phenomenal. They're like fabulous. So, and my kids love doing it, so.
Great. Thank you.
Matt, anything to add to your report?
Uh, yep. Just quickly, uh, our winter season is also underway. Our wrestling team had a scrimmage at Concord this evening. Uh, so sports are, are in full swing. We have a swim meet, uh, Friday, and girls' basketball will have their first home game next Friday. Uh, you guys took my thunder because I was going to talk about the BoBot, Bo, BoBot, BoBot bout. Um, and just really shout out Connor Parsick and Pam Cafasso, who are the advisors for that club. Pam is actually right now at WPI in Worcester, competing for regionals. Um, there'll be over 40 teams here on January 4th, um, competing, and it is a really neat event. Uh, we have Radium Girls, the, the winter production play. That's going to be uh, the 20th, 21st, and 22nd, 7 o'clock Friday and Saturday, and 2 o'clock on Sunday. Uh, our Granite State Challenge Team, um, which is advised by Michelle Vaz, um, qualified to be on the game show itself. So kudos to her and to the team for all their work. And the last thing, um, one of our goals for the year was to have more professional development led by our own staff. Um, this past, um, this past staff forum, we had Megan Byrd, who's, um, in her sixth year as an English teacher. Um, she presented on morphology and the science of reading. And Eileen Jordan, who's our school psychologist, um, gave a presentation on the physiological and psychological impact of anxiety. Um, and both of those presentations were really, really well-received by staff. So we have a really, really talented group, and it's nice to take advantage of their expertise.
Any questions for Matt? Guess not. Thanks. Uh, Chris, anything to add to your report?
Yeah, just briefly, I just wanted to mention that we were approved for a .gov domain, which is a pretty good thing for us. Um, so we're well underway with, um, starting the project of consolidating desnet.org and bonet.org. Um, on top of that, we're also looking at, uh, cutting over the website to the new domain name. So.
Excellent. Any questions for Chris?
I, I do, if that's okay. Is this the, the time to, to ask questions about that? Okay. Um, so as far as the website, all right. So I know that you're going to be updating everything and it's not completely done. But, um, so how is, how is this going to affect the website? Will it be more intuitive? Will?
Are you asking, the other, the last thing you were asking about Alma. Is this an Alma question, or is this a strictly website?
No. So I had two questions. But the, the website itself, like we, you know, like there's still like some stuff kind of missing from like the, the calendar or the way that it's set up. Is that always going to stay the way it is right now?
The structure of it, well, that's how it was designed. And so if, if there's some, if you feel like there's something missing, or you have a suggestion, we can still, we can make tweaks to it. We can add and delete. So definitely, if there's something missing, we'd want to know.
Oh, okay. Definitely. Then I'll, I'll.
Yeah, it's, it's just the namespace changing. The, the underpinnings of it will remain the same.
Okay.
Uh, the navigation will remain the same. So, um, you won't notice a difference other than the, the URL changing.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Um, and then as far as Alma, so I still, it's, um, for lack of a better word, still clunky. Um, and, uh, it's, um, sometimes you can't find things where they're supposed to be. You have to go and do a walk-around. Like, I was looking for Matt Davis's, uh, message, and it wasn't coming up with all the messages. And I had to go through, go into a different kid, then look through. And it was just, and I've also, you know, heard from other people, so parents and staff, that there's still some challenges. So what, like, what more, like, can we do, what kind of, do we have bugs? Do we, like, can you just give a little bit of context?
Yeah. So we're taking a, um, three-pronged approach to this where we've published Alma documentation for, uh, parents. Um, we definitely welcome any and all feedback. Um, the community can, um, submit, uh, essentially what amounts to a ticket to us through a form that we've published online. So if they're having issues with Alma, um, they could submit a form and we get an email notification, and we can check the spreadsheet and see exactly, um, who's having the issues and what their contact information is. And basically what that does is it, um, it takes building-level administrators out of being the middleman and gets the issues directly to IT so we can address those. So, um, we just need to get the word out, um, to everyone that, that, uh, form is available for them to essentially, uh, gain access to IT's support. Um, the third thing that we're doing is, we're going to be scheduling a, a forum for Alma where parents can come in and interact one-on-one with us to resolve Alma issues. So we feel like between the three of those things that we can effectively address issues going forward.
So when, so we've talked a couple of times about having that kind of forum.
Right.
And we need to attach it to something that's happening because if we just put that out, we're not going to get anyone to come. Um, like, the, that link is on our website now. And I think Chris told me earlier, there were four, four parents who'd put in an inquiry. So if we can pair it with, whether it's a basketball game, whatever the event is, and have, we can have our tech assistants here to help people, and we would advertise that. Um, but just doing it solely as that, we're not going to really capture a lot of people. The other thing is, we're going to send this, the link for the Alma support out in each of the, the principal's newsletters. So they'll have that in there. And I suspect that they'll get, you know, a couple more that way.
So if they don't see it in the newsletter, for whatever reason, where exactly, just for the people at home and people here, where exactly can they find that form on the website? Is it each individual school? Is it the SAU?
It's, um, at the SAU level, um, right on the, the direct Alma page.
Okay.
So you can find it right in there.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Chris. All right, excellent. Thank you, Chris.
I just want to clarify. It says like email addresses will be moving to sau67nh.gov?
Yes.
Is that like student addresses and like teacher addresses as well?
So that's kind of up in the air right now. We are prepared to maintain the subdomains that we currently have, the relative subdomains with the new domain scheme. But, you know, I'm open to the idea of, you know, just having a sau67nh.gov across the board. So it's, it's a discussion at this point.
We're continuing to have that conversation because what happens now is if, if I want to email someone in Dunbarton, immediately it pops up that they're not part of our network, that, you know, it's this warning essentially about trying to communicate with our colleagues. And we would like to have a system where we're all one SAU. And ideally, that would include our email addresses and student email addresses. But it's a heavy lift. And so it's not something that would happen now, but hopefully we can address it throughout the summer.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chris? Any questions about Mike Desilitz or Beth Corkum's reports for the rest of the administration? I guess I have one. Did the evals, the coaching evals go out in all the sports and get...
They did.
...responses and all that stuff?
Yep.
Excellent. All right, moving right along then. Action agenda. Do we have a motion? There you go. Jenny, you want to make a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the manifest for the period ending October 31st, 2024 in the amount of $2,721,555.77.
Angela, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Do not see any personnel actions, but at this point in time, Matt, why don't you give us a little something about the wrestling proposal?
They went down to Mass, I'm sorry. Last year, they went down to Massachusetts where they successfully won the tournament. So the request is to go, did I say Massachusetts?
Yes.
Yep, same thing. So to go up to Vermont where they will be defending their championship. So it would be an overnight, they would be, they would be over the night Friday, compete all day Saturday.
Angela, you want to make a motion to approve the trip and then we can talk more about it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the trip.
Do we have a second, Melanie?
I'll stick an arm.
Any discussion for Matt or anyone on this? It's been a number of years, like at least three or four years, right, that they've been doing this trip?
Yes. And our numbers, our numbers in wrestling are really strong right now. We have 26, 26 students who are part of the team. The really exciting thing is that the team is trending young, which I think speaks to Coach Billy. Shavon is really, really, he's a good coach, a really, really good coach. And it speaks to the quality of the program that he has. So many young, young athletes who are participating.
They did have an overnight trip last year.
No, I mean, I think they've done this very trip, like for like four years, I think.
It's the third year.
Third year, okay. I have a recollection of Jen Rain pushing back on this for some reason, but I can't remember why. Anyone remember what was the...
I don't.
Issue?
Do you remember?
No, I don't. I mean, it's over...
I mean, we approved it, so it didn't...
Yeah, there's no, there's no days off of school. It's, they leave, you know, bright and early, a Friday morning, and then they're wrestling each day. They're home. Sunday, there's 15 rooms. They're all on the same floor. There's a bunch of coaches going.
A bunch of parents.
My recollection is whenever Jen pushed back on something like this was when they were missing school. And to keep in mind the students that weren't able to go and having, you know, their education stopped for something like this. I don't remember ever having a tough time with anything once, if it wasn't during school days.
I have a different recollection. I know she did in this, but it doesn't matter because she's not here and we've approved it the last three years. And I don't, is there any reason why we wouldn't again?
No. My only, like, it's expensive. So if every sports team has to do this, would we be able to fund it? Like, what if, feel lucky, and soccer, do they pay for...
They pay for most of it. You know, they pay for a lot of the costs through their own fundraiser money.
So how much money do we actually pay for it?
We pay some of the entry fee.
So what is the entry fee?
One place on the box here, the cost says 300, but then the fund, financing of the trip, it says 3,000. And it must mean one's a...
We pay the 300. The rest of the costs are a lot of travel expenses, hotel, all of those things.
It says at the bottom, Bo High School Athletics will pay for 3,000.
I think that's a typo.
That's the only reason why I said it was a lot. That's why I said it.
And I think the other thing is, and Coach hasn't asked, but we blocked off the, so there was a time where we went to an overnight trip. Nordic went on an overnight trip and we actually used buses for that. And the bus driver would stay over. That became a little problematic because you have to find somebody who's willing to like be there the whole weekend. You know, usually you need somebody who wants to ski or something. They haven't asked, but we've blocked off the two district vans that we owned. That's actually not enough capacity for the size of the team now. It used to be fine, but now they've got 26 or 28 guys on the roster. So, but we've blocked that off so they have access to that if they want to use that.
Be careful with the falcon flyer.
All right. All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Good luck defending the title. And moving on, policy request allowing children of staff members to attend Bo schools.
Sure. So I have had, I would say, a number of requests or inquiries about staff members having the ability or option to send their children here. It came up briefly during negotiations and we thought it would be better as conversation here with the board than lying in the collective bargaining agreement. Not looking for action on it, just to start that conversation to even see if there's an appetite for it, if the board has an appetite for it. I provided you with our current admission of non-resident students policy as well as a sample, it's curersages policy, which allows their staff members to, it aligns kind of their structure for their staff members having their children attend. I can find more. I think we should find, we should find more. We should look for more to see what other schools are doing. I know Dwayne has shared, Cobran does something. We had difficulty finding that, but we can locate it. Dwayne knows people?
I do.
Yeah. There's a lot to consider with it, right? I mean...
Do a lot of schools, districts do this? Do you know?
I don't think a lot.
I think it's mixed. And the, and the way in which it's approached is different. I think every district seems to do it differently. Like Cobran, I think, is a sliding scale based on your year of attendance. You see that curersages is 25% of their per pupil rate. Some people are 50%. It's all over the map.
Yeah, I mean, when would you think we would need to ultimately say your yea or nay on this? Like spring ultimately, like at the end of the day?
Yeah, for next year. I think if you were to do something, it would make sense to have something in place for next year, in time for parents to make that decision for next year. Or that you're not interested in doing it.
So are you going to be the one that's gonna, I mean, to me, this requires a lot of research. Like, what are other schools doing? What's the impact to our school? Because it's going to cost, it's the cost, right? It's the cost of the pupils attending. It's, if it were free, why wouldn't we? Right? I think that's the only reason, is the impact to the taxpayer by doing so. So I think figuring out that cost is going to be a challenge. Then what do other schools do? And Bo is, in my opinion, kind of unique in that I think the majority of people move here just for the schools. And so I don't know, like, the tax implications and stuff of like somebody moving here as opposed to living somewhere else that now has the benefit of coming here. Like, to me, there's just a lot of stuff to unpack in that.
So I will definitely reach out to our association to see what other school districts are doing. And they can put it out to the masses. I assume Asbo could do something similar in terms of the financial impact. And we can, we can bring it to you. We should probably be able to have that for next month and talk about it.
Is this something that we want, like Bryce and I, to first look at, where with the policy committee or no?
Not until, we're not at policy stage. I think this is just exploration to see if you even want to consider a policy. If this is something that you want to move forward because there's, there's a lot to consider. So I'll, I will put it out to our associ-, Joe, Dwayne and I will put it out to our associations and we'll get some information for you and some maybe other samples.
Great.
I can also, we can put something together for staff to see, I mean, what are we looking at in terms of numbers? Is it, you know, five kids or is it 50? I mean, I think that makes a big difference, too.
Well, it really does. Because again, when I joined the board, I mean, the room would be packed with parents from Hooksett wanting their kids to come here and wanting us to open up for so many people. And now we have essentially zero. So, you know, there, I guess, I'll speak for all of us without approval, but maybe, you know. I would say now all of us aren't like just saying absolutely not.
Okay, great.
No, I think, I'd also like to know, like, how that would also affect the other things as far as like sports and other activities.
They would be, they would be Bo students.
Just part of them.
Right. So that might be something also to consider because some of our people who are paying the high taxes to live here for their kids to go to the school, not being able to play on a team, you know, because other kids are, I'm not saying like that's how I would feel, but I'm saying it's, it's important to consider all.
There's a lot to consider. Yep.
All right. Well, we'll just hang tight till you guys come back with, if at all, with a more robust sort of discussion on it. All right. Public comment. Haven't heard from you all night.
I know.
For anyone else, anyone that wants to make a public comment, now's the time. We have a frequent flyer at the mic.
Yeah, frequent flyer, Judson Malone, Seven Oddly Divide. I'm at the mic. So, because I know we're, we're broadcasting. So a couple, a few things here, I guess. I just wanted to acknowledge grant writing to get $35,000 a year is pretty amazing. Writing grants for success with that level is impressive. I don't know. Great job. Thank you. Yeah, that's awesome. IT, thanks for having open access for Wi-Fi at like all sorts of locations. It's really helpful, especially if you still have Verizon and you're still hanging on for those cell towers to come online. What's that?
It's a media.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And then I'll give you the Malone school updates. Because I've got them in all three. You saw two of them here earlier. They were doing their best to be quiet. But the moves have been going well. I've got a fourth grader and a kindergartner. The fourth grader's been, hasn't had any disruption in anything with his moves. Just thinks it's kind of cool that they get to move around. So the moves have been going really good. Oliver, our kindergartner, got to go on his first field trip. He was super stoked about that. He made sure he dressed up for it. He was really excited to go. So it's going really good from that perspective. Thanks for all of that. BMS, I had a daughter that we have, she went, she decided to try out Spanish. Didn't work with her. It was giving her too much. It was giving her fits. It was a little too much workload for her. And Adam and the team worked creatively to find an option with Velax to fill that spot for and give her something to stay on track and just give her other options than that and make sure to just work creatively with her. And it's really appreciated. Thank you for that. It's going well. Velax is a cool option. And we've appreciated it. They've got a great program. We met with her teacher a couple of times now. It's really neat. They have some really neat programs through, through that Velax system. Alma, I'm getting more used to Alma personally. We're getting there. We figured out how to go in and change from getting a phone call to getting a text for the upcoming snowstorm. So thank you for that. I don't love that I get three emails for every message that goes out.
That's my sore spot, too, because I have to send four emails. So that is something that right away, we identified as a problem. So it's definitely, it's known to them. So hopefully that can be resolved.
Okay, cool. Thank you. No, I even remember like the first email we got out of Alma. Somebody said something about, you're probably going to get three of these, so sorry. So, thank you. The Bo High School, the only comment I really have is on the girls' basketball team. We've had some low numbers for Bo Basketball, as in Mike's report. I've got to say they worked really creatively, I think, to recruit as much as they could. They did some, they did some open gyms throughout the offseason. Coach Cassidy and her dad, Coach Dale, have been doing a really good job of engaging the girls and getting, again, kind of working creatively to make sure they can roster some good teams and bring up a more competitive team. It's not going to, you know, it's not going to be the, it's not going to be the good old days of a few years ago, right? But it's going to be a fun team and they're going to learn a lot from Coach Cassidy and whomever does the, I'm not sure who's doing JV right now. But again, just wanted to acknowledge...
How many players on there? I mean, is it two teams? And what are the numbers? Swingers and, so collectively, is like 16 kids or something?
I believe that's the number. Yeah. It's something, something along those lines. And so my daughter's a swinger. She's pretty psyched about it, right? So pretty cool to have that ability and to just, again, work creatively to solve a problem. So just wanted to acknowledge that. There is a discussion about the wrestling program and I feel it's only pertinent to talk about how the Bo Brawlers working with BAC to make that happen. That's why we have a really good wrestling program right now. We've really committed people doing that program. And it's, it's going to show. You've got young players. It's going to be an amazing program for a while. And just really cool to see. Just a comment on the children of the staff, of staff thing. I, I like that idea personally. I feel, I don't know what the, you know, I haven't looked at any numbers or anything, but seems like a neat way, again, to have a potential benefit for drawing new teachers to the, the district, to have that as a side benefit for, for coming to work with us, you know. So anyway, I just wanted to say, I, I kind of like the idea. Again, it kind of varies depending on if you've got five or 500, right? But like, so it seems like a neat idea, a kind of a cool way of giving a benefit without maybe a huge impact to the program. So, oh, I hear it a lot. I didn't move here for the schools. I love the schools. I moved here for location. I moved here because it's rural with a cool community. And we have great schools. There we go.
Thanks, Ed.
Can I add one thing that you said about the Bo Brawlers? So last year, my kids and our family went to their Christmas brawl.
Jingle.
Jingle brawl. Sorry. I'm so sorry. Jingle brawl. Everybody's holiday brawl. And anyways, it was probably one of the funnest activities. I didn't know what to expect at all. It was completely a riot. I highly recommend it. And whoever that little girl was, that was Cindy Lou, who I'm going to say, she should be giving us all like self-defense lessons because she was just amazing. She was like a spider monkey crawling all over the place. I loved it. So I just want to say to anybody watching or anything, I highly, highly recommend going to that.
Excellent. Going on to board committees. Generally, the administration leaves if they so choose at this point, or anyone else. Well, we'll power on when people are leaving, just to advance the meeting. Policy committee, nothing, nothing new to add, unless you have something, Melanie, but nothing, we haven't really met since the last meeting.
No, no, but we, I thought we had a bunch to go through.
We're taking a pause right now on those because we've got through a lot. Yeah. So nothing, nothing really to add there. Negotiations, sure we'll talk about in the non-public setting.
Yep.
Budget, Martin?
We have not met, but we're eagerly awaiting January.
What is, what's your plan? Do you meet like once a week or on weekends? Or how's it work?
The school meets Monday and then Thursday is to town, starting January...
That first?
No, the 6th, I think.
Two, three, four, six.
Yeah. Except for, except the one...
There's one Thursday meeting that we move to Wednesday because it conflicts with our board meeting.
Okay. Excellent. Any questions for Martin on that? No? We'll talk a lot of budget next week. Town CIP, nothing new. We... next week. Town CIP, nothing new. We, we know, we've concluded, which we talked about in November. Town, District CIP, Buildings and Fields, nothing new to report on that. Wellness, anything?
No.
No? Future-ready schools?
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Okay. Transportation. Dwayne, what's the latest? You jinxed, jinxed yourself in November? Is that the look I'm seeing?
No, oh, no, things, we're, we're okay. We're good.
Will we have buses for winter sports?
Yeah.
Thanks. I just told the trucks we were fully staffed.
Winter is, oh, shoot. Sorry, sorry. So in terms of the three seasons for sports, winter is the best one for us usually because a lot of the events take place after school and, and things like that. So yeah, I think we're going to be in, in pretty good shape for, for that. We're, as you're going to see in the budget, we're, we're staffed right now. We actually have a person kind of waiting in the wings that we're going to start training, it looks like. So yeah, things are going really well.
Excellent. Dwayne, I don't have any air tags, but if an air tag was on a bus, would people be able to see when that bus is coming down the road? I know we've done the air tags on kids' backpacks and stuff, but what about on an actual bus? Could we have it so people had a better sense of when the bus is coming that way?
I don't know if an, I don't, I don't know if an air tag would do that. There are products that provide that. They're, you know, some of them are kind of, you know, kind of pricey and expensive and stuff, but.
Dependent on Wi-Fi.
And, yeah, they're dependent on, you know, service as you're traveling around town. I think one of the things that I, I wrestle with is that kind of information, kind of, you know, providing that information, like you know exactly where the bus is at all times. But there's a flip side to that, that, you know, we have actual employees out there driving and, and, you know, so there's a, that's a little, I don't know if I'd want everybody knowing exactly where I was all the time. But that's coming. I mean, there are districts that do it now. That technology is evolving, becoming less expensive. So my guess is that at some point we'll have that. But, but you do need, as Marcy said, you, you do need reception. And we don't have that right now, but I think it's coming. So I think it's going to get better, hopefully.
Okay. New Hampshire School Board Association, I know you gave a big update last time, but anything new since then?
No.
Okay. Athletic improvements in funding, nothing really new to report there. Booster Club?
Booster Club put on the food for the PTO craft fair, made decent money for that. They also are working on ads at the scores table for wrestling meets and basketball meets, so making some decent money there, looking for any other local sponsors that want to give to that. And they will be hosting a basketball tournament this winter during break.
Capital, whatever.
Capital, yes, it's coming back, yes. That's it.
I will add at this point, I've been approached by the Young at Heart Club to speak about sort of what's come, the comings and goings of the school. And I said, well, what if I could also talk about ways that they could get involved? And they seem pretty excited about that. So I'm going to incorporate somebody from the school to help me with that.
I would take Owen. No, because that's part of the.
Well, I was thinking more, this is Young at Heart. This is like the ARP crowd. I was thinking more along the, I was thinking more Dwayne maybe. And, you know, I certainly have had my.
My demographic.
Well, you know.
Garden is usually what I.
For years, I've had the idea that I think we should get some retired folks job sharing on bus driving. And I'd really like to make that pitch. This is, this is the folks I hope. I have no idea if there are five people or 500 at the meeting at the.
I would, I would say though, Bryce, that I think Owen would be good at that because one of the things of future-ready is to try and get more community involvement, even though he is not at the same age or part of life as Dwayne. He, he is also young at heart. And, no, but I think that, I think that not just to have bus drivers, I think that there's a lot that they could offer. We have a lot of talented individuals in Bo that have a lot of expertise that could come in and work in our schools somehow.
Great idea. I'll talk to Owen about it.
Hey, yeah, I do think what would end up happening, though, I worry, we all want all of our departments, all of our principals, that's, we're all future-ready, including Dwayne, even though he resists. Having him do it, I think, and he's closer in age to Owen than you think. So.
I am.
Sorry.
That's okay.
That way you're, you're kind of cutting out, oh, well, we have to go back and talk to Dwayne anyway. Dwayne can explain the ins and outs of, you know, what they would have to do and I think entice them in a, in a nice way. So.
No, but I was saying you both want.
They can both go, share a field trip.
It's like the first week in January. Marcy, I'll, I'll kind of, I'll punt to you. Whoever you think in the school, including yourself, whoever, or if you want a whole team of people, whatever.
Sure.
It's up to you guys, whoever you think.
It sounds fun.
Can help me out on that one. Excellent. Any more public comment? Generally, we don't on the third opportunity. Bottom lines, anything from Marcy? No? Do we have a motion to go into a non-public hearing under RSA 91-A:311, open paren C, close paren C?
Yes, I make a motion.
We have such a motion? Do we have a second?
We need a second. Yeah, okay.
Second? Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Martin?
Aye.
Melanie?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Bryce, aye. Eyes have it. Motion passes. We're going to go into a non-public meeting. Thank everyone for coming tonight. Appreciate it.